Councilmember Lewis, would you like to lead us in the public?
I'm ready.
We could do both all, please.
Okay, Councilmember Hornick.
You're.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
I'm Mayor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Silva.
Here. Is there any reordering of the agenda tonight?
None this evening.
All right, so we'll move right into public comment. Just as a reminder to everyone, we are asking that if you are planning to do public comment this evening or to speak on any agenda item, to make sure that you have your speaker slips submitted prior to the calling of the item. So tonight, we have a few. We'll start with Mr. Michael Baker.
That's very. That's good. Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Baker. I have the honor of being the CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs in Santa Barbara County. In a couple speakers, you'll hear from our youth of the year, which I'm very excited to have happen. This is her third speaking engagement. She's been to city council in Carp. She's been to the city council in Long Polk, her hometown. And she'll be speaking now tonight at our Bulton site. And I just wanted to thank Mayor Silva for serving on the Youth of the Year Committee. And I know it was a very tough decision, but you certainly rose above everybody and we're really proud of Monique for the work she's done. I will share with you a couple of things that we're really proud of, not only with Monique, but as an organization that we're really excited about. Across the country, one of the toughest demographics to reach and get back after the pandemic has been teens. And within the Pacific region, which is what we're part of for Boys and Girls Clubs, this led the way in the country with twenty-three, twenty-one percent of increase in teen membership in our clubs across the region. We're actually ahead. We're at twenty-three percent as an organization, which we've seen the increase in our team memberships, so we're very excited about that. I shared that with the board today and I would be remiss if I didn't always point this out as well. I really can't thank you enough as a city for encouraging your upper leadership folks in your departments. We're serving on nonprofit boards. We have the benefit of having this Andrea Kiefer on our board. She does a great job for us. And it's just awesome. And I'd love leaning over to Monique and saying, she's a club kid too. She wants to lead a club. So with that, just want to thank you again for your continued support and encourage you to come down to the Boys and Girls Club anytime. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's a good introduction in because our next one will be Monique Fairgun.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Monique Fairgun and I have the honor of being the Youth of the Year for Santa Barbara County. And I'm going to give you guys a little bit of my experience at the club. So when I first started going to the club, I was originally in third grade. I started going to the after-school program, which is called ACES, which is usually located at a school campus. The first day there, I had signed up. I was scared and kind of anxious because I'm kind of. I don't really like to be around a lot of people and I'm kind of antisocial. But the first day there, I saw a bunch of familiar faces that I have seen at school, so I felt very like safe and connected to some of the people there. And the first day there, I honestly loved it. They shared with me so many wonderful things. They taught me how to do a lot of projects, a lot of group activities. They showed me how to connect with people and how to understand people, even if they're different. They, they taught me how to speak up to myself, when to speak up to myself and how to use my voice for important things. And then I didn't go during my seventh grade year because I was going through an awkward phase during my middle school years. But I went during my eighth grade year and I went to the Long Polk Club and it was totally different than the ACES program. And it just made me open up my eyes to a whole bunch of different things. We did a whole bunch of community service. They showed me how to care for our city, how to help our city, how to connect with people at our city that are going through problems. They taught me how to cherish the things that are there because they're not always there for a long time. And they just taught me that no matter what, you always have people there that are there for you. You can always speak out no matter what. And just going there, I just realized like there's more than, there's more to life than you know. You don't always know what other people are going through and they taught me how to open up my ears and my eyes and how to help people and I'm very grateful for them. Thank you.
Thank you. You do work in our Bulton, are you serving our Bulton branch, correct? Thank you very much for all that. And I'm going to further embarrass you though, because it is your birthday today, correct? All right. We're gonna have to sing a happy birthday to you in this moment. So in count of three, everyone. One, two, three.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you for coming on your birthday. Thank you. Next up, we will have Len Fleckenstein.
Yes, I'm Len Fleckenstein, a Bulton resident. At the previous two city council meetings, I was one of several people who provided comment on the Kudal Pipeline here in Bulton. Today, I really, I'm back for the same reason, but I really just want to thank you for sending a letter to the county board of supervisors regarding the restart of the pipeline. Now, regardless of whether the letter had any effect on any supervisor and regardless of whether the pipeline restarts in the near future, I greatly appreciate that you seriously listened to Bulton residents' concerns. You openly discussed and debated even, I would say, the issues. And you publicly expressed your concern for our safety. And along with the city manager and staff, you efficiently drafted and sent a letter. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Next up, we have Shoshana Schwartz.
Good evening. My name is Shoshana Schwartz and I'm on the board of the Friends of the Bulton Library. First of all, I would like to thank the council, the city manager for our beautiful new library. We appreciate all the money and time and trouble. Into it. I believe our city manager had a full head of hair before it's. It has come to our board's attention that the, there's a possibility of an access path between Ranch Club Estates and the library. And we would appreciate the city looking into this if it's feasible because one of our goals is access to the library. And I know that the residents of Ranch Club would appreciate anything that can be done to facilitate this. I'm also wondering what the status of the extending the bus line to the new library is. I, I don't have a car right now, so I appreciate any help I can get from the bus and bus line. And I'm, I know others do too. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing our attention.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to look into the, the possibility of an access between Ranch Club and, and the Willamston property there. Not sure what the legalities of that are, but I'll look into that with regard to the bus line that is being worked on. And we anticipate that bus line extension, those. For the bus line amendment.
Um, no, that's already included in Saniness Valley Transit's plan. They're working with the transit operators right now. We already had the sign. We'll be installing that shortly. And they anticipate that the fixed service route will start March tenth. And as far as dial or ride, because I think that's specific to whatever location, dial or ride users can use that, you know, as soon as possible.
How does that work? How's dial or ride work?
That's usually for seniors and disabled folks. And they call the Saniness Valley Transit Service for specific pickup. I don't know if they do it at a specific time, but they have certain windows availability. They schedule. Yeah, it's pretty much door to door.
Yeah, you'd schedule like a half hour window for like pickup between ten and ten thirty and then return at like eleven thirty to noon type of thing.
Right.
Well, based on availability.
Right. So the best stop would be, and we'll be bringing something council for this too, to have red curbs, things like that installed. But that's going to be around the knuckle off of Meadowview to Valley Dairy on the west side of the building. And then Dial Ride would stop right in front of the driveway, right in front of the path, path of travel onto the site.
Sounds good. Well, thank you, Ms. Schwartz. It sounds like everything's moving in the right direction. All right. And then our final public comment, we have this friend, Lee Danielson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And my name is Lee Danielson. I'm with Sable Offshore Corporation. And I really appreciated the gentleman's remarks before. I think it sounded very reasonable and reasonable. You sometimes gets lost in this discussion, if you will. But I've been around this area in Bulton. I just finished my fiftieth year on Rancheros last year. And I hope another fifty. We'll see what happens. But anyway, I've been around seeing this. I'm delighted to know that Bulton's now a city, which I had no idea that Bulton was a city. You know, when you, when you come by and you see Anderson Split P, it was Anderson Split P and that's the way. So it's really, it's nice to see what's grown and I, I'm pretty impressed by coming here and seeing what's here and seeing what you have going on in the city. So I, my main reason for coming is to introduce myself. I'm head of government affairs for Sable Offshore. I wanted to introduce myself. I believe I've written all of you. And I want to make myself available for lunch, coffee, realizing it can only be two at a time. Keep the Brown Act going. But I like to do that and also let you know that we're here and understand safety is our number one issue. In many ways, way too far for me to talk about in three minutes. But what we will do and would like to do, given permission from you all and wanting to have, we host a situation here in Bulton for everybody to come to town hall and let people ask whatever questions we want. We're an open book. There is no, there's no hidden agenda. There's nothing that's out there. But we are very serious about what we're doing and we take it very seriously. So I just wanted to introduce myself and finally get that. And I, I must say, we did do a little research. And in the year that we've been here, working back on the pipeline, we've spent twelve million dollars in Bulton. We did, we collected all our receipts from all our hotel rooms, from all our workers that come through. And everything that's happened in Bulton. And we're, we, we think we've had a good economic impact on the city of Bulton. So that's not to really sway anybody, but just to say we're here to make a difference. And we're, we, we will do a great job. We're serious about what we do. And I'm very thankful for having the opportunity and I didn't know that you were going to do that letter two weeks ago. Otherwise I might have been here before then and said, hey, let's discuss the situation. And said, hey, let's discuss the situation because not all of what you read is true, as you know, in most cases. But, uh, I didn't have that opportunity, but it's okay. We're all right. And, uh, but I'll be happy to meet you and I hope to hear from you. I'll put the ball in your court. And it'll be with any and all of you at any old time. So you just let me know. So thank you very much for allowing me this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, we will now move on to the consent calendar. And we have for that, the minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty five, regular city council meeting. List of claims to be approved and ratified for payment today for fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five. Oh, only two. What an efficient consent calendar. So, um, can I entertain a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornet.
Aye.
And Mayor Silva.
Aye. Right. Do we have any presentations tonight?
We have no presentations this evening.
Okay, moving to public hearings, we have item number three, resolution number twenty five oh six. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Bilton, California, adopting the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal year twenty five, twenty six through twenty nine. Thirty. And our staff contact will be Public Works Director Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. So this is an annual item that the council reviews and approves. As you're aware, the county of Santa Barbara has a Measure A tax fund. Um, and this is taxes collected to, um, assist in local transportation improvement project funding. So we call this our Measure A program of projects that we're bringing forward to you tonight. We are identifying projects that we are planning to use our share of Measure A funds over the next. Five-year period. We do this annually, so it's a rolling five-year period. You'll see, we have estimates right in the staff report for each five-year periods provided by SB CAG. And the estimate for this coming fiscal year is four hundred and forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars. And again, this goes towards various, um, road improvement projects and also our transit. Um, subsidies as well. So this goes to that share. Exhibit A of the resolution. To it here. Shows the breakdown of the estimates on how we plan to utilize the funds over the five-year period. You'll see we have a, a set amount generally set aside for road maintenance. And then at the lower half of exhibit A, you'll see allocations that is geared towards. Um, alternative transportation improvements. So sidewalk improvements, bike, um, head. And then also transit services and those are itemized down below. As part of Measure A, we have a, um, maintenance of effort that's required and. A requirement to provide at least five percent of the funds that we are allocated to go towards alternative transportation. And based on the calculations you see on the table, we're well within that. That is, you know, we're at fourteen percent just based on. Um, our repairs for roads, our dedication to the trails and our transit, um, allocations. So with that, uh, we do take a public hearing for these items because it is used of public, um, measure funds. Uh, in case there's any comments and questions for that. And these funds, just to make everyone aware, they're not used to supple- uh, they're not used to supplant. Our funds, we are still required to use our own general fund monies to go towards our road maintenance purposes. And these are just to supplement as well. So these certainly help with our getting some of our projects underway. So with that, um, we recommend that council adopt resolution and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions by council for staff?
I have a question. Feel like I'm looking at me. Are there any questions? Uh, so Rose, um, thank you for, for that information. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding correctly. So we get misery funding, um, and this resolution is basically, uh, how we're planning on allocating that misery funding?
Correct.
Okay, cool. And, uh, is this up to, for debate? We can like adjust how we jiggle this or?
If you'd like to change the, the set of allocations, you, you can do that. We're only allowed to use it towards transportation projects, road improvements and transit, bike, ped related.
I was just, I was wondering about like our allocation for road maintenance. R and R and our, uh, multi-purpose trail reserve because we currently are dedicating just ten thousand dollars a year to that, right?
Correct. Yes. And if you guys want to change it, I mean, that's entirely up to you. We're last four and then one year council decided to increase it. And so we adjusted it accordingly. And so for planning purposes, we just, uh, estimate that same break, breakdown.
But that's something we could discuss now.
Correct. Yeah. If you'd like to increase it now, let me know. We can adjust it and you know, you adopt the. Resolution with the, excuse me, with the changes you recommend.
Is, I guess it becomes a bigger question because I don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul for our road maintenance. But if we could allocate more of our funding to the multi-purpose trail reserve, I think that would be cool. But obviously I don't want our roads to suffer from that. Is there some sort of breaking point that, that happens?
Uh, no. It, it's entirely up to you. Like I, like I said, with our road maintenance projects, we have a little bit of gas tech that goes towards it. We certainly use our Measure A and then you just increase more general fund to go towards, uh, road maintenance.
Uh, so and increase the multi-purpose trail reserve. Would just come out of, our, our road maintenance plan would, it would just come out of general reserve. It really doesn't matter. We're not.
Correct.
Got it. So we could just allocate our own general fund money to.
Yes.
The trail as well. So that, it doesn't really matter. It's just an allocation of fund.
Right. Yeah.
And we also have other funds dedicated to the trail reserve. Both grant funds and general fund reserves.
Right. We're still actively always looking for additional funds to help implement those projects.
No further questions.
Any questions, Vice Mayor Lewis? I mean, really poorly here, but.
Go.
Um, I did have a question. Uh, somebody approached me about the road. Excuse me, in front of the Chevy dealer and the two forty-six. And is that something we have to request Caltrans to give us a little more attention to?
Yes, if there's like a specific pothole or some safety issue. You know, we would put in that maintenance request online because it is part of their project. Caltrans has. A project that will come in, another maintenance project, but it's in the. Mid-future. Not quite near future, not quite far. It's probably about five. Out approximately, but they've already been with touch with us as far as pre-planning for, um, this project, but.
Can we make a request to make it a little faster or is that something we can do?
We can request, uh, that goes through their budgetary process as well. I don't, I don't know what fiscal year they have things.
That's just.
Right. Well, and the public's also welcome to put in those service requests and concerns on the Caltrans website. And that usually helps accelerate things based on the quantity of.
Thought that I could hit the road fix form, so they. Um, the other thing is somebody was on Facebook today asking about speed lumps. I don't know if anybody followed that on. Saw something on Facebook.
Yeah.
Is that, was that for La La?
Well, I, or. Think I, um, uh, there's like three locations. I have questions for, I was gonna, I don't, I had that for council questions and comments or.
Okay. I was, uh, I thought that was on the road maintenance agenda part. That's fine, whatever you want.
Oh, yeah. I think we have to stay trying to, I'm almost just looking at the attorney now for like, we're trying to stay in scope.
I think the idea was just making sure that we don't include whatever the requests are within this Measure A funding, correct?
Though I didn't know whether Measure A funding would be something that we would use that Measure A money out of, but. That's just road maintenance, but not from road improvements, right?
Correct.
So road improvement is a separate section.
Yes.
Yeah, it, it, it probably could be used, but we don't have enough information to include that at this point in terms of foster design or anything of that.
Right. Thank you.
Uh, do we have any public comment on this?
No.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll bring it back for further discussion. And I'm mostly just looking at Councilmember Hornet. But I mean, I, did you want to discuss on reallocation further?
No, no, I, I just wanted to, I mean, we were to discuss all that in our budget anyway. If it comes to measure, it comes to general fund, it's one or the other for maintenance or.
And, and just so you know, we, we bring this back every year. So if during budget sessions, you guys are looking at, you know. Five, ten years down the line and thinking, oh, we could probably use a bigger amount from Measure A or something like that. Then next year we can come in, prepare with a larger allocation or however you guys so choose.
Perfect. Any further discussion or would anyone like to entertain a motion at this time?
I'll move to approve resolution number twenty five oh six. Do I have to read the whole thing? Yes, right? No, okay. I have stated.
I'll second.
Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
Aye.
Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornet.
Aye.
And Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Perfect. Moving along, we'll go now to council member comments and items. Um, Councilmember Hornick.
Uh, I want to bring up the idea of, uh, uh, traffic calming measures for, uh. Apparently there are some areas in La La that residents have expressed concern. But also for the residents on, uh, Valley Dairy and the Riverview Park area. Um, I know that at a recent town hall, people did express the concern of people entering, leaving the, the, the park. Uh, also general safety concern along, uh, that road there along Valley Dairy. Uh, if staff would look into it, if council consensus for have staff look into it. Um, I don't know, you know, whatever speed bumps might be appropriate, or I was also thinking the, the dips. If speed bumps aren't appropriate, there are dips that slow traffic down too. So that might, might come into play. Rose is avoiding eye contact, so. So, yeah, that, uh, I think would be great. I also want to ask about. The. BMX track again and follow the staff, those BMX track and the, uh. Playground at Riverview and that pathway there. I know we talked about some kind of fence or, uh, the permitting process that would cross that. Uh, drainage culvert being the ultimate solution, but I was wondering if any progress is made on that or if that was moving along.
Um, Rose, do you know where the Prop sixty-eight fund, um, um. Allocation for the, the bicycle skills track is at right now? It's probably a question I need to ask of the rec department.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Uh, I thought they did their phase two already, but I, I, I'd have to check.
I can, I'll, I'll look into that and get, and get back to Councilmember Hornick. Um, um, that's, that's been a long, uh, ongoing project. I know that, uh, funds had been allocated for the purchase of, uh, equipment to go on that track. Uh, to my knowledge, it has not yet been installed, but I find out what the status is and let you know.
Okay, the funding including fencing, is that a good?
Um, I, I'll, I'll look into it and see. I'm not sure what the funding included. Uh, it's been so long since we've looked at it and I know I've talked about fencing with a couple of you and.
Right.
And so we'll, I'll look into that.
I just have concern, as you know.
I understand.
The children crossing into BMX from that.
I, I, I understand and if that has not been resolved, we will bring it back here and let the city council have at it. Okay.
And do we want to do consensus on, uh, whether I have to look into traffic calming measures for Riverview Park and the library area?
So I've received requests on traffic that, that the La La area, like around the dog park area, central, second. Second avenue or second street as well as, um, yeah, by the library. So we're at like five locations. And so I am, have a little concern of. We don't want to become the city that's just one giant speed bump too. So I don't know exactly how to look at this at a holistic measure of it, of like. How many requests are out there and how best to handle them.
Well, I did bring up Rancho Del Maria, but I know that there is also concern there as well.
You have one, right?
We have a bunch.
Yeah, several.
But we get, we get.
It just seems like they don't, yeah, they, they, you're just zooming to next one or you have a big enough car that the bumps don't.
So there are a number of issues that go along with those and I'm sure Rose could talk about it for a whole lot longer than I can. Uh, but, um, it might be beneficial. Uh, for the city council to take a step back and have us bring, uh, forward to the council a discussion on the matter. Um, what some of the pros and cons are, uh, where they tend to be appropriate and, and effective and where they don't. Uh, and then have the city council establish a, a policy going forward so that you're not simply addressing these on a case by case basis. There's no accusations of favoritism or, or, you know, arbitrary decisions. Establish the policy first and then move forward because once you, once you start down that path and start approving them, you are going to get every neighborhood intent. Wanting speed bumps. And as you've all noted, that, that is not conducive to effective circulation throughout the city. So we need to be, if we're going to use them, we need to use them judiciously and with a policy moving forward.
So like speed bump one oh one, everyone good with that?
What do you mean?
Just like.
Perhaps we can supplant next month's deep dive with speed humps instead of visitors bureau.
Yeah.
Down the road a little ways. We can just, if that's what you'd like, I will.
How do we feel about?
Not narrow it to speed bumps, but rather like traffic calming measures and what works in neighborhoods versus like when we're talking about the highway.
Yes, we can, we can look at a, a variety of different, I mean, I don't want to get too far into the weeds. We can, there, we can go for hours on speed humps alone. I'm sure, uh, but we can go with some of the more frequently used, um, traffic calming measures, the speed humps, signage. Um, you know, on-street parking oddly enough is one of those things we, we want to encourage on-street parking. It narrows the drive lanes and tends to slow people down. But that has its own issues in residential areas. So we can, we can look into that and bring forward some of the. The highlights and let the council kind of direct the discussion from there.
That work for what you're looking for, Councilmember Hornet?
Yeah, yeah, it does. I mean, and I appreciate the willingness to sort of do that and have a deep dive. I guess I don't, um. I don't want to plump somebody else for that conversation. I'm not sure that would necessarily, or.
The, the.
Need a lengthy discussion on, right? It would probably be something that could wrap up pretty quickly.
Uh, and, and I, I think Mayor Silva will get into this a little further, but the, the purpose of the whole deep dive concept is. Is not to bring in someone who wants to talk about something. But to bring in, uh, bring up a topic that is for the city council's benefit and the public's benefit. Uh, for instance, tonight's deep dive about the law enforcement contract is only informational about the contract. It has no bearing on anything that's being requested by the city or the sheriff's department or the public with regard to the law enforcement contract. It's just informational in nature. So. Uh, the, this would be, in my opinion, if you wanted to ask for it, a great deep dive kind of a, a discussion. Uh, we had, uh, talked about having the visitors bureau come in the next time. But the o- object there was to bring them in before the budget discussion. So it wouldn't hurt to push it back a month.
I hear you. I guess here's another thing that I'm concerned with, right? Like people have expressed concern about the traffic and the speed. And so they have identified specific locations. I wonder if it would be in staff's best interest of all, and all of our best interests. To identify those locations and say, roughly speaking, this is what we think may or may not work and here's why.
We can do that, but I, I would, I would highly advise discussing this as a council. And starting to establish at least the framework of a policy moving forward because once you start identifying areas. In advance of that policy being, um, uh, established. You, you're just setting yourself up for a lot of, a lot of, uh. Uh, lobbying by the different neighborhoods, a lot of, uh, you know, angry interactions from neighborhoods that don't feel like they're getting their due. So, um, it's just probably going to be better in the long run to establish that policy first.
I'm comfortable with at least having that. I think the other one, it's, there's so many nuances to it. See, even if you talk speed bumps, it's like whose house has to have it in front of them, which is. No, everyone wants a speed bump, but not directly in front of their house. So there's a lot that goes into it. So I do think we probably should approach this a bit more measured. So that we can establish a policy, not with a project in mind, but in a policy that works for the city and then let the projects fall appropriately into that policy. So I think at least it's movement forward.
Here we're saying, I'm, I'm, I'm reluctant. I defer to Scott greatly. I'm reluctant to have a policy about whether or not we're going to put speed bumps in certain places, but I will have, will defer to receive more information.
I'd like to entertain the motion that there be a policy that we don't have speed bump.
That's not really up for the discussion.
But that, well, that's where we're at right now. We're not just willy-nilly putting in speed bumps. So actually right now, we don't have.
That, that's, that's right. And all, all we're talking about at this point is whether the council wants an informational item brought back.
I think for the sake of educating us and the city in what's best in circulation, it would probably be a due diligence for us to use it as a chance to educate all of us. On how best to move forward. So at least we start that. It sounds like we could use a further discussion with a non-agendized item right now.
Thank you.
Are we okay with that? Do we have consensus to schedule something like that?
Sure.
Okay.
We might not.
No, it's me moving. Sorry.
Well, we got through your first. Well, we got through your first council comment. So we got through that. I don't know. I'm just, we're still on the first one.
I was going to ask about the survey of the library.
It is still ongoing. As far as I know, I will check in with library staff and see what they've collected and and I think we talked about a six-week period or so from the from the opening moving forward, and then we'll evaluate.
Sure, you're getting some, but that's all I got.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, no, this time. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Now all of mine have been covered.
Great. I have a few items just want to go through. Wanted to first off, want to speak with Director Rose about the construction timeline since we have the Highway two forty six and McMurray Road expansion going on. If we know like how long that may be or
So construction is anticipated to start next Monday, March third, and is anticipated to run about eight months. So give or take, hopefully we can, everything keeps a smooth sailing and move forward and finish on schedule. Weather permitting.
Eight months. Great. Sounds good. Thank you. Next one, I wanted to just kind of bring to everyone's attention. I know that I wanted to thank Councilmember Hornick for joining in our last one that we did. We've been working to try and have more of these town hall formats that are going on around town and do a bit more outreach with that. And hence why we have the speed bump conversation that we do have for the library for that. And so I just wanted to make sure, put on the kind of speak with the council about as we're doing these town halls and trying to do them in a bit more of the districts or neighborhoods or however you want to view it. I just wanted to say that my hope is that we can have the district representative for the town hall in that whatever's taking place and be present. And then sure, if one's not being able to be present, I was thinking it might make sense for the vice mayor to attend since it's kind of the easiest way to have two people sent out. We have to be limited to two, and I just wanted to check and make sure that format works so that we have a town hall in your districts, Mr. Councilmember Sanchez, like the two of us can attend for that or things of that. So I just wanted to make sure that we're good with that kind of format and structure moving forward. So I'm not kind of over assuming the willingness of all of us to do these town halls and be engaged.
Yeah, but well, I requested to go to your town hall. And if you're asking me not to go and want Hudson to go, is that what the, was that what your solution?
No, I was saying that basically at this point I was trying to do them. We had requested from you, I believe, wanted to do it. And also Vice Mayor Lewis had asked about going, and I was thinking that might make sense to have it be mayor and vice mayor in attending these when there are a spot for two. Now, if Vice Mayor Lewis doesn't want to go, of course, have it be open. Open if anyone else wants to attend, but I'm trying to just keep, since we can't do a Brown Act violation, trying to do how to structure it the best way.
I was just wondering what what started. When we we had a town hall for the library, and that was important for that neighborhood. And now you're setting up district. So you're going to have your district have a special meeting, and then am I supposed to have my district have a special meeting, and then Hudson's going to have his district do a special meeting, and then Alicia does a special meeting for her district?
That was the goal, is to try and engage actually with Councilmember Hornick, who's been working to with like Rancho de Maria, might probably have its own conversation that's worthwhile to discuss their concerns as well as Ranch Club Estates. So there's different subsets that have different concerns and needs that just make it easier to have discussions that are more focused in on what's going on in the area. So it does have to be districts kind of the easiest way to slice it in some ways, but there are things I know you're you have three very distinct neighborhoods that are in there, but yours is a bit amorphous.
Engagement tool. I think that we've had, we've had a difficult time absent people being angry or upset about something to engage with people and having a platform with which to engage and doing something that is by district sort of gives them more of an outlet and also gives them an outlet with their peers rather than showing up to a town hall with everybody.
I disagree with this peer deal. They, I mean, we have a whole city and everybody is supposed to represent all citizens, even though you you know, you can pick your district and you can say, that's my neighborhood and we did this. But that's not, I don't think that's representative of the way the city should be run to split it up and make it these are my people, these are your people. I don't think is the way this whole district thing we didn't want to do anyway. And the reason is, a lot of it was because you would have one councilman wanting to treat his district differently than getting more attention than other districts and and I just think that everybody is in the city together. And to make it to where these people are different and those people are different, and where do you split it up? I just disagree with the whole. And then I I I like the library idea. And if somebody wanted to have something else, if we had a problem and on Avenue of Flags that we had to, you know, if we're going to have a special meeting just for them and then nobody else in town is invited, is that the way you want to set it up?
It's more about being proactive and engaging neighborhoods in a manageable manner, because when you do an open kind of call to everyone saying, come in if you're concerned, it doesn't really work for having it be a nuanced conversation. I would argue that the concerns of Ranch Club Estates that have just been brought up is going to have, want to talk about the access road that's taking place. That'd be a pertinent conversation different than necessarily traffic mitigation concerns that are taking place on Second Street or something of that sort. So it's more about trying to have people be able to speak to what they are seeing in the day to day and engaging them at where they are. So my hope was just to try and structure this as smaller conversations so people could have what their concerns are addressed versus one large discussion of the two forty six. It's a bit more nuanced that way.
It's also addressing the unique concerns of each community because like our community, which I would say ours are pretty darn similar since they're block away. The needs of our community are going to be different than the needs of multifamily communities. Like, we don't have the same density. We don't have the same we're we're just not experiencing the same things that they are. So I would say that like the conversations that we would have, at least like on my street, are like, why are people parking on my street in the middle of the night and like playing in their car for hours? I don't know that it's the same conversations that the people with the high density would be like, why are they parking in the red, you know? So it's just allowing the uniqueness of each community to be discussed in a way that can give them the time to have those discussions, whereas when it's the the city as a whole, it's like you're piecemealing everyone's conversations and not really being able to like dive into it, you know, because it's kind of like, okay, and moving on to the next community. Okay, moving on to the next community rather than saying, okay, in this community, what are your, what are your three big ones, you know?
So what's your big one?
Mine? Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, maybe we can bring this item back for discussion as well. Maybe help you with a calendar of some sort of maybe just like some draft dates and, you know.
I just disagree on this. And it's, if it's not for discussion, we need.
It's just because it's a non-agendized item, and I think it's getting into a little bit of a discussion, but it does seem like it would be something you'd like to maybe outline.
If we want to, do we want to invite this back to formalize the format for town halls going forward?
Sure.
Is that, is that what the council wants to do? Or do we need that if that's?
I don't think we need it. I was going to say, if you were going to call a town hall, I want to be invited for my district. That's all I would.
So why don't we just make it so we can all go? We're going to have a town hall.
Try to split it up. We if we call a town hall meeting, unless it's an agendized city council meeting, we can only have two council members in attendance.
Why don't put the agenda of each district and we all get to visit instead of making it to where you're splitting everybody up?
What's agenda?
And we can, we can bring this back. I think
I just don't like this picking a neighborhood and teaming up and treating everybody like they're different. They're not different. We
Alright, so it sounds like we need to do a agenda further then so that we can discuss it.
What what I what I would like to hash out right now is we have a a town hall meeting scheduled for March fourth. I have two council members who have requested, in addition to the mayor, who have requested attendance at that.
I was not familiar with the town hall.
It was on the recap that.
It was. Yeah. I've had two council members who've asked to attend the District Four Town Hall meeting. I would really appreciate if the council could at least make that decision this evening so that I don't have to argue with a council member about not being present that night.
So you we don't have a representative for that district right now, right?
Correct. And so I was just thinking, my whole thing was just, it makes sense of how we would function since in the past would be the mayor and vice mayor being in attendance without having a district representative.
Well, you don't you have a conflict with that if it's your neighborhood?
There's, this isn't a conflict of interest. This is a discussion. There's no action to be taken. It's not a, it's not a meeting of the council. It's it's a town hall discussion. But because it's not a meeting of the council, we can only have two council members present in order to to ensure that there's not a Brown Act violation.
I don't want to put her on the spot, but my question would be, I mean, if somebody else on the council attended in their personal capacity, would that be a groundhog at least?
So because it is speaking on items that would be under your purview as a council as a whole, yeah, we would have, right?
We can go to the alternate route of just having only me present.
That's that's another.
Concern the other direction too.
I would either say, given the concerns, either just the mayor present because he's uniform and going to all of them, or we we all have the ability to go and agendize it. I think it it takes away from the feeling of a small community discussion when we make it an agendized meeting, and I think it characterizes it as something different for the community members attending. So my preference would be to have it just be informal with the mayor if that's the way that we choose to go rather than agendizing it and making it formal. But if you all disagree and would like to attend, then I think we just.
Well, if you don't want to go, then I'll go. That'd be nice. Thank you.
I don't think that's what we're discussing at this point.
She just said she didn't need to go and we and I'll go. So then that's what we're doing. If two council members at the meeting.
That's not quite what I said. I said that if we can't come to this agreement, then we can either agendize it so everybody can go, or we can make it so that just the mayor is going.
And what's the disagreement?
But I I did want to go as well to hear what everyone was saying. But.
Well, I suggest agendizing it back because it sounds like Councilmember Sanchez really wants to go.
So can we?
We have to go to agenda to have to decide.
We need to agendize this tomorrow, so I think I can throw together an agenda for tomorrow.
I can just bow out. It's fine.
Okay.
It's not.
It's great. So it'll be me and Councilmember Sanchez in presence for the the town hall.
Okay. Yeah.
I didn't want to know. I'm talking out of turn now. That did spark another comment that I had. I was going to say, I know that we're doing the newsletter via Beelton Buzz. And that's every other month. I was wondering if it was possible to do it every month.
It is. It is possible to do it every month. As it is, every other month, we struggle for content. And and then there's also the the, there's also some limitations with regard to the practicality of that and throwing other inserts into our utility bills periodically. You want to throw other inserts in there. So by doing it every other month, we can throw another insert in the utility bills. The our process only allows two sheets of paper and an envelope.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to clarify. I didn't mean sending up the Beelton Buzz. I just meant the e-newsletter every month.
There is no e-newsletter. It is the buzz, and it's posted on Beelton Engage and and that it it becomes our e-newsletter because it's sent out via email. It's the newsletter everyone gets, but it's sent by email to anyone who might not get it in the mail, who would, who wants to sign up for it.
Right.
Yes.
But.
But it only comes out every other month.
But it is an e-newsletter, right?
It is an e-newsletter, yes.
So if we could maybe put one together every month, that'd be cool.
What kind of content would you be looking for?
Well, that's what I mean, whatever's going on. We had updates from the from the the, about the construction going on on McMurray. I mean, I believe there's other things that we could talk about, like updates.
Periodically, but I'm not sure I can constitute an entire edition every month.
Well, okay, okay. Let's see how the first one rolls out. Yeah, okay.
Oh, whoo.
Anything else? Okay, moving on to written communications.
We have no written communications this evening.
All right, moving on to committee reports. Councilmember Hornick?
No, thank you. I don't have any.
Councilmember Sanchez?
I did do two committee reports. One was the chamber. And that went very well. The good news, Kathy went to Phoenix for a meeting. And I think she went to LA the next weekend, so she's been real busy. Today I went to CCWA, and we had a three and a half hour meeting. And that went very well too, which was really long, but everything's going well waterwise. So we're doing good. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lewis? All right, last week attended SB CAG for, and we discussed the last mile broadband as well as the federal and state platform for the board to seek funding resources. As we move into a new administration federally and new budget forecasts at the state level, everything kind of has to be adjusted for how to advocate best for funding. I attended the SB CAG retreat today to discuss how to identify priorities for Measure A funding since, in theory, the one oh one expansion is planned to be done by twenty twenty eight, plus or minus years because it's a transportation project. But so we're starting to identify how best to utilize the measure A funds that are allocated for the one oh one expansion and where we look at for the next 10 years since the tax is planned through twenty forty. And then attended three CE Audit and Finance Committee today and discussed the financials of the organization about competitive rates against investor-owned utilities. It was as thrilling as it sounds when I say it out loud. So those were the committees of the day. Moving on to business items. All right. Item number four, we have the review and discussion of agreements to provide law enforcement services between the November County Sheriff's Office and the city of Beelton. And our staff contact for this is City Manager Scott Wolf. I just wanted to provide kind of a qualification for this. This was something that was brought up as we have a number of agencies and we have a number of partners that work within our community that oftentimes either the council or ourselves may not be fully as vested or and vetted on what's taking place. So this is just an opportunity for us to kind of get all the facts out there, educate ourselves, educate the public of what's taking place. And so we're hoping to utilize these on kind of a monthly basis, which sounds like transportation and traffic flow may be the next one, but it's a chance for us to, when there isn't a agendized item for taking action for us to be able to discuss these items and have open conversation about to get our questions answered and maybe help it so that ourselves and the public have a better understanding of what's taking place. Since I think that a lot of us would argue the sheriff's department contract is not the easiest thing to digest in a casual Google. This is a chance for us to get it set straight. So I do want to just thank you to our city manager for this time and a chance for us to elucidate further on law enforcement contracts. Hope you're all ready for an exciting presentation. City Manager Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the city council, welcome to our first ever deep dive into an issue. And tonight, as the mayor noted, we're going to talk about the joy that is our law enforcement contract. So you'll find probably, well, well over one hundred pages of our packet. Maybe close to one hundred and fifty pages of our packet is dedicated to this particular item. I guarantee you, you will have no problem going to sleep if you try and read this late at night. But what I'm going to try and do for you this evening is condense it into a few little bite-sized pieces that maybe will help make, help this make sense, give you a little history on the matter, and hopefully spur some questions so that I can make sure that you all understand it to the level that you would prefer to. As you're aware, the city of Beelton is a contract city, and under the contract city model, Beelton provides municipal services, essentially the same municipal services that any other city would provide. But because we are so small, because our budget is so limited, we provide those services not with direct city staffing, but through contracts with other agencies, be they're other cities, counties, districts, or private companies. As an example, our city attorney is a is a contract staff member. Much of our engineering, all of our engineering department, with the exception of our city engineer, Rose Hess, is provided under contract. Our library staff is provided under contract, trash collection, provided under contract, and law enforcement. I'm sure there's a number of other ones that I'm missing. I know there are landscape services. I could go on. But in particular, tonight, we're talking about the law enforcement contract in particular. Cities do this because, especially small cities do this because contracts can allow for more efficient and flexible provision of service. In other words, we can provide just the service that's needed without having to overstaff ourselves. We can increase service when it's needed on a short-term basis and decrease it. Whereas if you're hiring staff to do that, you can't necessarily be that flexible with it. It it allows for a lot more agility in the provision of service because particularly if we're dealing with a private company or rather large entity like the sheriff's department. In most cases, they would be able to increase service or provide additional services that we would not be able to provide on our own. That's the, that's where we find ourselves with with our law enforcement contract. So we do have an existing contract with the sheriff's department for law enforcement services. There are both benefits and costs to this. There are pros and cons, if you want to put it that way. The benefits I've run down a little bit in our staff report. But essentially, those benefits were revolve around generally lower costs for the provision of service. The sheriff's department, being a large organization, takes advantage of a number of economies of scale. They are able to provide services much more cheaply. Uh, they are able to provide services much more cheaply because they have much more depth and breadth of their own staff. So providing that to us can be done at a lower cost uh, per unit than what we would be able to um. Do on our own. Think of it as buying in bulk. You're you're going to get a better price if you buy in bulk, which is what the Sheriff's Department does. Versus buying individually, which is what we would do if we would have to provide our own police department services. Um, it also lowers costs because it it eliminates the direct exposure of the city. To a lot of the other costs, the indirect costs uh, that are associated with providing the service and in. Law enforcement in particular tends to be a very expensive service to provide. Um, there are legal issues, there's insurance, liability insurance is a huge component of our of our contract cost. Um, there's a higher requirement for additional law, non-law enforcement staff support. Things we wouldn't necessarily think of, but if we had our own uh, police department, we would have to probably hire. An additional human resources person because we would be dealing with um, uh, uh. Labor relations, uh, bargaining unit negotiations every year. There are higher pension obligations because when you have law enforcement staff, they fall into a different. Pension category under CalPERS, which um, is is a much more expensive uh. Pension program to administer and and to pay into. All all of these things are huge costs if we pick them up on our own, but because. We can pick them up through the Sheriff's Department, we get a much better and more efficient rate out of that. There's also the increased breadth and depth of services uh, that the Sheriff's Department provides to the city when we need it. So we don't always need to have a SWAT team. I can count on one hand the number of times the SWAT team has been activated in the last couple of years. On two hands, in the entire almost six years that I've been here, um. And uh, we we would be paying for that on our own if we tried to have our own SWAT team. Aviation Bureau, we have helicopters at our disposal, not our disposal, but should the Sheriff's Department need. Uh, helicopters for law enforcement operation, they have those. If we had our our own police department, we wouldn't have access to that. There's a bomb squad, there's a search and rescue team, hostage negotiations team, there's a whole series of of um. Services and teams available that the Sheriff's Department can provide at a moment's notice that we would not be able to provide on our own. So that's. Those are the primary benefits for contracting with the Sheriff's Department. The costs of provide uh, of of contracting with the department, um, kind of the flip side of this. By contracting with the Sheriff's Department, the city gives up some of the control that it has over how law enforcement is conducted. Uh, as an example, the um, our street vendors are are our um. Food vendor that set up over here on McMurray Road, our our flower vendors and fruit vendors that set up on Highway two forty-six. There is a state law that addresses how we need to enforce that. But the interpretation of that law can can differ depending upon who's reading it. Now, our city attorney. If we were to go um, and attempt to enforce this through our own police department. May be willing to take a a more aggressive approach than say the county council will. Therefore, if the county council says, no, we're not going to do that, even if the city wants that enforced in a more aggressive manner, the Sheriff's Department will not. Do that for us. That's the um, uh. That's the purview and it's written into the Sheriff's Department contract. They will enforce the law as they see fit to enforce the law. Uh, we don't have a whole lot of influence there. That's not to say one is right and one is wrong. It's just to say different cities and uh, we'll we'll take different approaches and we don't have the ability. You as the city council don't have the ability to influence how that's done because we relinquish that control to the Sheriff's Department. We also relinquish control over the costs of law enforcement. Um, we don't have the ability to decide when increases in uh, law enforcement costs come up. Under this particular contract, the way it's written now, anytime there's a change to the Deputy Sheriff's Association's memorandum of understanding. Um, we're responsible for paying our portion of that to the Sheriff's Department. So you as the council don't. Hold the purse strings and saying, yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to give you the five percent increase this year. We're going to keep it at three. That decision is made by the Board of Supervisors. And and the Sheriff's Department. So. We relinquish that control. That's part of the, one of the things we give up by having a contract for for law enforcement. So we have a, we have an existing contract right now. It, oop, I'm sorry. Oh, okay, we're back. Um, that began in July of twenty twenty-three. Uh, but the prior contract was initiated in twenty nineteen, uh, and it. It ran along with uh, the extensions that were built into it through twenty twenty-three. The last two years of our prior prior contract um, were. Tainted with a bit of controversy. There was a dispute, not only by the city of Beelton, but by the other three cities that have contracts with. With the county for law enforcement services regarding the uh, proposed increase in costs to our contracts. They they were unforeseen. They even went contrary to the estimates that were given to us by the Sheriff's Department several months earlier. In the, in the case of the first one. And it was deemed to be in the best interest of the city to dispute those increases. So the last two years of that contract had disputes that resulted in significantly lower contract. Uh, costs for those two years than we would have seen. Had um, had we not disputed those contracts. However, at the end of twenty twenty-three, we no longer had a contract. And at that point, we were um. Uh, we were put in a position of having to agree to a lot of the Sheriff's Department's um. Requirements with regard to costs, simply because if we did not do that, we wouldn't have law enforcement service here. We would be forced to try and stand up a department on our own. In almost maybe six months, I think, or four months, whatever the timeframe was. Which would not have been uh, really possible. We did investigate other options, but there were no other feasible options at the time. And so. We did our best negotiating through this contract in all four cities. Were involved in negotiations and all four cities have essentially the same contract with with the exception of. The number of posts that are provided by the department to each city. Uh, in our case, we have one post, Solva has one post, Galida has, I believe, five posts and. And carpentry has three, or maybe it's three and two. They they have more posts than we do. In addition to those posts, there are what they call menu items. Those might be the motorcycle officer. There's uh, other menu items that are available. Those are. Separate, they're they're they're, if you have one, if a city has one of those menu items or more than one. They are addressed as an addendum to the contract. Uh, we'll get into that in a little bit. Right now, we we don't have, um. We don't have to worry about that. It's not in our contract at the moment. The current contract, though, when it was uh, when it was finally negotiated, while it didn't. Result in an increase uh, to the amount we were paying on a per-post basis from what we saw previously. Um, it did address some of the concerns that we had with the prior contract. And the big one that it addressed for us was that we no longer have to worry about. A huge unforeseen increase that comes up from year to year. We can usually predict that. Under the current contract pretty reasonably because it's really tied to. The whatever the the current salary rate is, the negotiated salary rate under the memorandum of understanding with the Deputy Sheriff's Association. Along with an annual escalator. Think of that as a cost of living increase. We built that in. Right up front so that uh, everyone kind of knows uh, every year you're going to see at least this. Amount of an increase and possibly more depending upon the changes to the MOU. Um, it eliminated what was referred to as a true-up and the true-up. Process was one in which the Sheriff's Department would charge us a base rate during a given year. And then in the next year, they would uh, spend that time comparing the costs of what we paid versus what. We should have paid if we had been billed for everything. And then the year after that, they give us the bill for the for the um. For the difference and. And we'd have to pay it on top of our current contract costs. It got to be very confusing. It got to be very just exorbitantly expensive. It was the reason we had uh, our first contract. Our first dispute uh, came up because the 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 true-up resulted in an increase that year of. About forty-nine percent over the prior year, which as you can imagine. Was just untenable for the city to deal with that without any any kind of notice. It also, for the benefit of the Sheriff's Department, um. Allows the sheriff to actually recover the costs associated with the service they provide to us. So they're not giving us service for free because by law, they're not allowed to do that. They need to recover their costs. The question was. And the dispute over these years was how do we establish how those costs are recovered? You know, what what costs are legitimately recovered, what which ones are not. We we round and round with that. Um, we. I don't think either side was terribly happy when we ended the negotiations, which probably means we did a decent job. Um, but we do have the predictability. Built into that, the Sheriff's Department has the knowledge that they're going to get paid for the service that they're providing. Our prior contract, it just to give you an idea of what the costs look like on our prior year contract and and a and a quick rundown as to how they were calculated. Ran from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-three. Um, it used a DSSU model. DSSU is Deputy Sheriff Service Unit. So. For each deputy sheriff position, or I shouldn't say position, I should say post, and a post is then is um. One deputy sheriff, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. That's what 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 it would, that's what a post constitutes. Uh, and so the cost of that is more than simply the salary of. Of a deputy sheriff. It's the salary of five point two or something deputy sheriffs. But in addition to that, there are uh, equipment costs and facilities costs and dispatch costs. We also pay for the administrative support. And the supervision for um, the deputy sheriff that's on duty at that time. And that's what you see in this table here is a breakdown. Uh, uh, on a proportional basis of the costs of, you know, how much we should be paying. Uh, for a um, a sheriff's commander because the sheriff's commander oversees. The deputy sheriffs out there through the lieutenants, through the sergeants, and they build those costs into this contract. Like I said, it's a very complex contract. There's a lot, it it took months and months for all of us to kind of really understand. To include a lot of the Sheriff's Department staff to really dig in and understand what was going on here. Um, but this was the prior model and the the real key here, if you notice right down toward the bottom about the. Fifth or sixth lineup, you'll see the line, the number true-up. And in this particular year, there was a true-up number of seventy-four thousand dollars. Um, this was under the prior contract and this was a negotiated true-up. This was not the true-up that was proposed that year, but this was the the end result. This came out of our contract or amended contract for that year. Um, the the original proposal had a much higher true-up number in it. Uh, but that's, that's how that cost was uh, reflected. You'll also see there's inflation costs built into this. Again, very complicated. If you get into this and you have specific questions, I'm happy to answer it. Based in part on the hours the deputy was in the city, so they were actually keeping track of when a deputy was in the city. And if a deputy that was on patrol in our city. Got called out, they would subtract the time that the deputy wasn't in the city. Likewise, if another deputy that was in the city. Um, for whatever reason was here while our guys. Were our, our deputy was called out, then that deputy would be, we would be paying for that deputy's time because they were in the city. Uh, difficult for record-keeping on their part, difficult for um, the the trying to keep transparency so that we could understand that. When we went and and they were trying to explain to us why we were being charged things. There wasn't a lot of transparency, the the. The the system that they use to track all these things was actually multiple systems. They didn't talk to each other. And so it was. It was difficult for them to explain to us and difficult for us to understand it. We've come with up with something that's a little bit um. A little bit easier to understand. Um, you'll you'll look at this and you'll see there's one, there's not, there's the same number of columns, but there's fewer individual items. Um, they've kind of consolidated a lot of these things. Um, you do not see a true-up on here. Um, you don't see inflation, you don't, you know, you see a whole lot fewer um, categories. Uh, the numbers are larger at the bottom, but that's to be expected. This was two years later, I believe, than the than the um. Table I showed you just prior. Um, but it's, it's just a different way of calculating this and there is a. Um, let's see. Well, I don't, I don't see it on here. It's built in here someplace. Uh, other staffing charges, they have um. Insurance and workers' comp, you know, liability and unemployment insurance um, built in here. Uh, there's a credit for workers' comp time that was paid back to the county for deputies that were associated with or for. Our proportion of deputies that were on workman's comp that they got paid workman's comp duty back to the. Money back to the county. We have a credit for it in here. So it all works out in the end. I think we're we're satisfied that that we're getting what we're paying for and we're not paying for too much. Again, I think both sides are reasonably satisfied that this is a better approach. Doesn't mean it's not complicated, doesn't mean it's not difficult to understand, uh, but we modified the DSSU model. It's based on the post as opposed to. The deputy's uh, Sheriff's Service Unit, uh, and it completely eliminated the true-up provision. And then there was an escalation factor, as I mentioned earlier, that ties this uh, cost to the cost of the MOU with the the labor groups. Okay, uh, the question on everybody's mind, the motor officer. What's with the motor officer? So. Um, there are no current, uh, there are no motor officer costs reflected in the current contract. Uh, that is because the county. When this current contract was uh, entered into, did not have the staffing to provide that. And so they did not want to include it, which is probably a a wise choice. If they can't provide it, they're not going to commit to it. Um, they have told us, though, that as soon as they have staffing sufficient to be able to pull a patrol officer off of patrol. And assign them full-time to the city of Beelton as a motor officer, they will do that. In the meantime, we are using um, motor qualified deputies and it, someone has to be. Go through training specifically to uh, to be a motor officer. Uh, so there are several of them uh, within the department right now. We have three of them that currently provide um. Service in the city of Beelton using voluntary overtime hours. What that means is that they work their regular shift. Forty hours a week, whatever their regular shift winds up being. Uh, and then outside of that forty-hour-a-week time, they can, if they have. A desire to come and work traffic um, enforcement in the city of Beelton on the motorcycle. We have the motorcycle. It's here for them to use. They they use it. Um, but it is not something that it's assigned. It is not something that is scheduled. So you'll note that some weeks we don't see them very often. And but if you look at the last two weeks, we see them out here a lot. And uh, that's what we're hoping for. The reason for that is we had had. Two motor officers for a long time, then it went back down to one, and now there are three of them out there and um, our. Acting lieutenant, uh, acting chief of police lieutenant Green um, has told me that there is a fourth one on the way, which means we should see. More uh, enforcement. Again, uh, we don't know when that's going to be happening, which is probably a benefit to us because. You don't know when it's going to be there. You don't want to speed. So uh, everybody keep your eyes open, but um. Uh, we we accept, we expect a fourth one soon. So the current cost of service excluding the motor that we're paying for this fiscal year is two point nine million dollars. Okay, that that is an increase of seven point two eight percent over last year's cost of two point seven million dollars. Next year, we expect to the increase to be uh, five point two eight percent. Um, and that uh, will bring us up to three. Three million eighty thousand plus dollars. These are much more reasonable increases than what we've seen. Like I said, we went from forty-nine percent down to, I think, seventeen percent the first year. And then we went from there to fourteen percent or somewhere between eleven and fourteen percent the second year. So this is more reasonable and 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 easier for the city to um, uh, adapt to from a budgetary perspective. Um, and it's more predictable. Because we're not going to see these huge jumps uh, due to unforeseen circumstances or things beyond the city's control. Now, subsequent MOU changes, if this, if the county goes back to the Deputy Sheriff's Union, uh, they get together again and and negotiate amendments to their contract. Whatever they come up with is what we'll need to pay. You know, our proportional um, uh, share of the costs for that particular, for our. Single post that we provide. And then if the motor officer is included in that, his costs will go up as well. Uh, in the end, we always come back to the same question. Can the city of Beelton have its own police department? And the answer is yes, we can have our own police. Can the city of Buellton have its own police department? And the answer is yes, we can have our own police department, but. Um, the cost for service to operate a department on, by the city is comparable to what it would cost us. To pay the sheriff's department to do it. Um, but that's only for personnel and operating costs. That doesn't include, uh, some of the. Other, other, uh, costs that would come into play like, um, the additional human resources staff member, like. Uh, increases in our legal costs, like increases in our insurance costs, and it also doesn't include, um, uh. Uh, capital costs, uh, that, uh, pop up in here, uh, facilities and equipment and, um. Uh, vehicles, uh, would, would be on top of that. Vehicle maintenance is on top of that. So there are a lot of other costs that come into play when we're operating our own department that are absorbed by the sheriff's department contract. Um. There you go. Liability insurance. Um. So at this point, what I will tell you is the, that, that feasibility can and should be provided. Um, or evaluated in the future going forward, whenever the council feels it's necessary to do that. Uh, but right now, based upon our most recent evaluation of this. Um, and we're still not at the point right now where the sheriff's department contract is more expensive. Than it would be to provide our own police department. Um. Um. Like I said, it, at some point you may realize or come to the, come to the conclusion that. It's worth paying a little bit more to have our own police department because we get the control that we need over costs and over, uh, over enforcement. Um, policies and that sort of thing. But right now, uh, from the staff's perspective, based upon our latest evaluation, the costs really don't, um, uh. Uh, don't, or the costs far outweigh the benefits that we'd receive from, uh, having our own department. So that was really quick and dirty, something for a really complex, um, agreement. Uh, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And if I don't have the answers for you tonight, I will put them in writing and make sure that you all get them. And I'll conclude my report.
Thank you very much. Uh, moving to questions, uh, Councilmember Horneck.
Fantastic, amazing. A lot of work. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Um. We, we discussed, uh, for our own, uh, law enforcement agency with other municipalities in the valley.
That is something that, uh, has been battered around, particularly while the contract negotiations were going on. It is still something that is discussed from time to time, uh, nothing officially, but, um. Uh, I know that there was interest of, at, at, at least at one point in the city of Solvang, there was interest for the city of Buellton. Um, it would seem to me that if we were going to do something like that, it might be beneficial to put the two cities together and maybe. Um, try and bring, uh, uh, the tribe into this and, and make a larger valley wide. Um, whether a joint powers authority or special, special district, probably can't be special district, but. Some other entity that can provide that service, uh, we've also looked at, at, uh, contracting with the city of Lompoke instead of the county. Um, that didn't go anywhere during negotiations, but I've been told that that is a, now a possibility from Lompoke's perspective. And it's something to keep in mind. Um, I, I was on one of the slides and in the report I didn't mention it. If we were to pull out of the sheriff's department contract, we would need to give them, uh, three hundred sixty-five days notice of that. So, which is. Okay, because it would probably take us at least that long to stand up our own department. Uh, or negotiate a, a contract with another department and, and phase that in. So. Um, it's something that is there if the council decides to use it, but at, at this point, um. You know, w- we seem to be in a fairly good position right now from both a, um. Uh, uh, well, from a budgetary stability perspective, we know what's coming so we can plan for it, which was a weird problem previously.
Yeah, I just wanted to, like, kind of answer it.
Yeah.
Long-term.
It would, it would probably be much more, um, much closer to being, uh, uh, beneficial, uh, from a cost perspective that way. Simply because you're dealing with a larger, larger police force, more economies of scale. But, um, we, we haven't worked out any details on that. So the conversations never went to that point.
Probably something worthwhile at least chatting about.
Any other questions?
No.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Uh, yeah, we, I know we talked about having cameras in town. Um, but. When you go to, you know, the, I forget the flare cameras or the.
Uh, well, no, not the, not the, this was a flock. Block, yeah, block.
Um, someone asked me if they were going to have these at the new, uh, housing. Spots because in other parts of the county, they have these flock cameras that catches the, uh. You know, license plates and, and that kind of thing. And I was wondering, is that something that is required of the new housing?
No, it's, it is, well, if, if the, if the, um. Owners or managers of those housing projects wish to put it in, that's fine. It's not something the city requires. And to my knowledge, it's not something that the county requires. Uh, we do not have a contract with Flock. Um, we likely. If we ever had a contract with Flock, it would be through the sheriff's department. Um, and that, you know, while it is something I've, I've discussed with the sheriff's department previously, we're not. Ready to discuss that here at this point. So, but it, yeah.
So we agenda is that we've, uh, we've been talking about cameras for. Years that I.
We, we.
Put that on.
If you'd like me to prioritize that, I can start, I can ramp up conversations again and have them come in and give you a presentation.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
If there's consensus on that, I'll do that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I support that.
It's just a presentation.
Yeah, yeah, just a presentation.
Any other question?
Nope.
Vice Mayor Lewis? Um, only one I had was, I didn't, I know you said we didn't have any contract. What is the cost of a motor officer?
Cost of a motor officer, um. Uh, I don't know if I actually put it in the staff reports. Uh, may have. It was an estimate. Um. The way I like to think of it, it's roughly maybe a little less than what ten percent of our overall cost for the contract is, because we're only dealing with forty hours a week and, um. Uh, let's see, did I talk about the motor officer? Uh, it doesn't, it doesn't look like I did here, but yeah, it, it would be somewhere right around the three hundred thousand dollar range at this point. It was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-three and with increases coming up. By next fiscal year, when this would be implemented, it would probably be just shy of, of three hundred thousand dollars a year.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions for staff? Um, did we have any public comment?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Okay. Any further discussion or anything? I know we just have some, we just talked about Flock. Any other further discussion or anything? Or any items we need to further go?
And it just a question, the motor officer is just whatever, whenever they show up, we pay them and is that, is that part of a budget item or we pre-approved?
It's, the sheriff's department is, is providing that for us right now. Uh, when we get the bill, we'll pay it bill. Um, it's not in our current budget though. It was in our prior year's budget because we had actually budgeted that year for a motor officer, but this fiscal year it is not in the budget. So, um, we will have to do a budget adjustment to pay for that law enforcement service at this point.
Can I ask, uh, a follow-up question on that if you're done?
Go.
This is for Chanel. Chanel, as far as ongoing operating costs, are we factoring in motorcycle officer or are we not?
Um, in the future budgets that we're working on, yeah, we will factor that in, but not in the current one.
So the current operating budget forecast that I saw recently did not factor in a motorcycle.
Correct.
And I'm sorry, but what, did we say what roughly that was?
About three hundred thousand. Yeah. Law enforcement is by far our largest, um, budget line.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Well, thank you very much. I know that was a lot of work for that and I appreciate all your time on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on to item number five, we have Avenue of Flags Medium Three Revised Conceptual Plan, and that will be our staff contact for Cara Morales.
Hey, good evening, Ms. Silva, members of the city council. Um, let's get the PowerPoint out.
Okay, just a moment here. Oops. Come on, there we go. All right, and let me.
Great.
There we go. Okay.
Okay, so I have the privilege of presenting a refined conceptual plan for medium three. That's our downtown park, uh, on Avenue of the Flags. And go to the next slide. Uh, the Avenue of Flags specific plan calls for this median to be a community space. Um, it's meant to be. With an amphitheater, um, a community building, a restroom. And a park space and a town plaza with some flags. Uh, so I'll just note medium three is the large grassy median in, in the middle of Avenue of the Flags. Um, to the west is the five eighteen project, um. Or sorry, to the east and then to the southeast is the creekside project. So those are adjacent. Um, and then median two is the city's public parking lot to the north, and then median four is the landscaped, um. Landscaped sidewalk pathway, um, with the Veterans Memorial to the south. You can go to the next slide. So the planning commission and city council first saw these concept plans in June and July respectively of last year. And through these meetings, one concept plan was chosen from the two and staff was directed to make certain revisions to this concept plan. Which are, uh, stage facing to the south with the amphitheater stage. Uh, the pavement was to match median two in the color and material. And the pavers, um, were to replace decomposed granite or DG and then some open space replaced the DG as well. Um, for the crosswalks, we wanted to see pavers instead of paint. Yeah, the community restroom buildings were to be separate. And then there's more of an art deco statement overall and, uh, larger mature trees to start. So Yolanda Bruno, eh, is our landscape architect, uh, intern, and she'll be going through the next slides, but. Um, I will take it from her when she presents the, the concept plan in more detail and then, uh, I'll turn it back over to council.
Hi, good evening. Can everybody hear me well?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so, um, as Cara mentioned, um, we have some modifications to the previous, uh, plans. And in this aerial view, um, I want to start by pointing out some changes here and then we'll move on to some. Uh, perspectives, um, that zoom in closer to the elements. Of the median. So, uh, we are emphasizing more of the art deco character. So some things to look for. Is at, uh, the top of the image, you see the amphithe-, amphitheater facing south now. And as you move along, uh, towards the open space, uh, you will notice that we do have now, um, crosswalks that are. With pavers instead of painted. And, um, the path of the median would be in a permeable, um. Pavers that, uh, follow, um, color and material of median two. Um, this, um. Meandering path in the median is a ten foot wide, um, path. Uh, any other paving in the median that was before decomposed granite is now a different art deco style paver. In white or cream or, and black or dark gray, um, tones. Uh, we also emphasize, if you look at the bottom of the slide, you will see these little, um, vignettes. So to your left or to the left of the screen, there would be this, uh, art deco stylized paving. Um, what you see, um, the fourth slide, uh, from the left would be the art deck. Oh, you can stay in the, sorry. Sorry, I meant, um, at the bottom of the page. Yeah, that arched, uh, black and cream right there. Yes, thank you. Those would be the donor pavers embedded in the art deco style paving that would be situated, um, inside the, um, town plaza. Uh, also notice that, um, art deco styled furniture is emphasized like planters. Trash cans and the seating would be in strong art deco style. Um, also notice that the buildings are separated. This was another modification. So the community building and the restroom. Are separated. The smaller one would be the restroom. Um, and, um, landscaping, uh, would be larger mature trees like Cara mentioned. And now we can go to the next slide. Here we see, um, the town plaza here on the south, uh, with. The flags and notice the art deco styled pavers in black and white. And that's where the donor paving could be embedded. Um, also, uh, the bronze soapbox, I'm going to remind and refresh of the elements that we had in the previous concept that are. The same, for example, the bronze soapbox for free, free speech, the flag display. Uh, for the community in-ground lighting are those circles that you see in the town plaza. And the existing, uh, way sign, wayfinding sign. Uh, the pavement access here, the crosswalks are paved, um, accessing through ADA, um, at, um, curves. To the median, um, the civic center here, you see, or the community building and the restrooms. They are in a blank style building that way. We can adopt any kind of art deco style since, um, there are varied and Cara will talk about this further afterwards. And, uh, we can go to the next slide. Here we see the amphitheater that would be facing south. Uh, that is the open space and to the left, we see what is the. Uh, bioswale with some, um, bridges crossing over. Um, the pavement access to the right shows also, uh, driveway access that would, uh, allow. Come, access to the amphitheater and that building. That is with the amphitheater would be a storage space slash, um, a backstage. And the seating is tiered and curved. Uh, we can go to the next slide. Here we notice more of these, um, large mature trees and drought tolerant vegetation. Um, and art deco. Style play structures, shade sales, um, also the seating and. Um, tables would be the art deco style that we saw earlier. And we can go to the next slide. Um, notice, I. Don't know if you can notice, but where the benches are, we've extended the path to go under the benches before we had. Decomposed granite. Thank you. Yes, exactly there. And there are some areas to access from the parking with ADA, um, curb access. Um, on the left, there's retractable bollards. That's to access for the amphitheater right there. Thank you. And we can go, um, to the next slide. Here, um. The flag is in the center. It anchors the median. And, uh, we see also the vendor spaces like the food trucks and the pop-up vendors. And we notice also the crosswalks and paved, um. At, in paving instead of painted in the middle. Thank you. And this kind of provides access from both sides of the median, um, for businesses and residences. Um, that will probably be there in the future and enough seating, um, and tables for the vendor spaces as well. And we can go to the next slide. Here, uh, notice on the bottom part of the medium, that's the flex area. Um, for our display, that bridge crosses over the bioswale and I. Want to mention that the bioswale would only be at the east side of the median, um, north and south. And that you see the path that connects from the bridge to. Yes, that's the art deco new. Paving and can pass in the community center and restrooms. And we also see, um, the town plaza to the left. Yeah, right there. And we can go to the next slide where. Uh, we see a feel of what it would be like to cross from median four. I believe to median three with the flag display, the soapbox. Is that right? Did I? And, um, we can go to the next slide. And here we have options for flag display and soapbox to be either facing the front side of, um, the town plaza. Uh, southernmost or the north side of the town plaza there. And the next slide will show another, uh, potential option with, which is bull bouts. Um, that would potentially be on both sides, north and south of the median. Um, that would potentially be on both sides, north and south of the median. As safety buffers where the crosswalks are. And the uh bike lane is to remain as is painted bike lane. And that is um, that is it for the presentation.
And Scott, if you could go right back one, I just want to note for the um bowdouts and the. Uh, plaza flags, um, those were the menu options that council had wanted us to bring back. Um, so the planning commission at their February sixth meeting, um, at least consensus, actually go one more back. Um, consensus consensus on the um plaza flags, planning commission wanted to see the flags behind that would mirror median. And they also did want to see the flags kind of split in the middle. So there was would be three flags kind of off um center. And I'll just note that on median four, the flags are kind of all spaced out in a semi circle. Um, behind the the town plaza on median four. Um, and then on the next slide, the bowdouts, um, the planning commission wanted to see bowdouts included. And that's really important for the avenue flag specific plan for pedestrian safety and crossing the road, um, traffic calming measures. Uh, so bowdouts are recommended um and in required by uh all. Five eighteen uh creekside, not exactly bowdouts, but traffic calming measures, um, although five eighteen is providing bowdouts. Um, and then council had a concern about costs and costs can be kept a little bit lower by um. Maintaining some low maintenance ground cover or doing pavement on those bowdouts. Uh, okay, next slide. Okay, so the last uh option here is the architectural style. So these are um all art deco and art deco has so many facets of design. And um I'll just get into three different styles. So this is for the community building and the restroom building. Um, so here, I mean, you see a bunch of different examples of different styles. So art deco is really prevalent in the nineteen twenties through the forties. Um, it evolved in the fifties and beyond. Um, the theme is really of evoking modernity. So it reimagines ancient motifs. And then embraces new technology. We can go to the next slide. Uh, so these are the adjacent projects, the five eighteen and the creekside, and these are more of the classic modern, which I'll get into in the next slide. So this is um really about in the nineteen twenties, thirties, uh classic modern. It really emphasizes vertical. Um, it's has a more geometric form, parapetted towers, the columns. Um, you can see some of the. Uh stylized organic forms like in plants and animals, you can see in that middle top. Uh, so that is classic modern and I'll note that two commissioners wanted to see this style. It mirrored uh five eighteen and and creekside. So this is a streamlined or art modern. And it was really shaped um uh around World War Two uh with stream, the streamlined machine aesthetic of ocean liners and airplanes. Uh, so the emphasis here is on the vertical, or sorry, horizontal versus uh classic is is emphasis is on the vertical. Uh, so it's identified by its rounded edges, um, the more streamlined look, less surface ornamentation than classic modern. Uh, a lot of the styles have the glass block windows, um, and the horizontal grooves of the lines in the walls. And then I'll just note um that lower middle picture is actually on avenue flags. Uh, so we did have some art echo in the city's history. It just isn't here anymore. Uh, next slide. So streamlined fifties diner style, this is kind of evolved from the streamlined art modern style. Um, it was really shaped for and from the car. Uh, it was obviously used in diners a lot and that was to capture uh motorists' attention on highways. That's our third and last style. Um, on the next slide, I'll just note that um art deco of any style can really capture local. Influences. So um some examples here are from other communities, but um one is Napier, New Zealand. Uh, it's considered to be the art deco capital of the world. Um, they have a lot of Maori motifs in their art deco design. That's the indigenous people of the country. Um, Palm Beach, Florida, you can see has um a lot of the palm motifs or ocean influences in their art deco. Uh, so built-in art deco could integrate any cultural motifs. We could do equestrian ranching, car culture, history, wine, you know, great motifs. We could draw influences from um our Tunis, Danish, Spanish heritage. Any of any of that local influences can be throughout any of the styles. Okay, um, before I turn it back over to council for the comments and questions, um. I'll just note, please, please give any comments on any aspects of the design. Um, if council determines that it's appropriate to direct staff to start construction drawings at this point. I will ask uh the first two options at least be. If possible, given a consensus uh for the flags and the bowbouts, so that won't hold up construction drawings. Um, for the architectural style, that can be determined now, knowing that. Um, I noted two commissioners have the wanted to see the classic modern and two commissioners wanted to see the streamlined or art modern. So that was a split. Um, so council can consider the art deco style and choose one now. Or it can be um determined at a later conversation. I know Mr. Wolf is going to be. Um, talking to the council at a later date about the uses, the specific use of that community building and maybe the council wants to decide at that point. So that is it for me.
Turn it back over. Thank you very much. Uh, moving to questions for staff. Anything for staff? Council member Hornick?
No, I don't. I don't have any immediate questions for staff. Are we doing public comment on this or no?
We do questions then public comment then discussion, yeah. No questions? Council member Sanchez?
Uh, might have a question about how high the stage is. Um, because does is it like the gazebo and so it'd be set up higher?
Yeah, the stage itself would be higher, but I'm not sure how high.
In the in the seating beyond the stage looks like, but I think it's going down elevation wise a little bit, but it. Uh, or maybe flat there.
It is so right now, the natural topography um is higher on the west side. So it would have to, the site would have to be graded to to turn. Originally, the amphitheater design was kind of mimicking the natural topography. Um, but facing it towards the south now, we're gonna just have to do grading and that there might be retaining walls or. Um, we don't exactly know at this point.
Whether the elevation of the seats are more of a bleacher looking or are they less?
There, um, yeah, the height, if you're thinking about the, you're asking about what height uh was given to the seating. Inter about a, is that the question?
Yes.
Yes, about about a seated height. So I, if I recall correctly, it's about um eighteen inches or a little higher for each. Seated seating seated area. So you would comfortably arrive and sit as if it was the height of a chair. For for the first one, for the first lower level.
I imagine it look a lot like River View Park where the stepped uh seating is there next to the Botanic Garden.
I just didn't know that's gonna be an obstacle, like it's gonna be a structure. Higher than, it's gonna be a wall in the back of it or or you know, like a barrel back there or something or is it?
Yeah, at this point.
And then, cause the higher it is, the you could, people behind it could see the performance. If it was a little lower, you know, if you had longer. Seating than colors, because it's gonna be more than just the whatever you could see fifty people there and there's a hundred of people behind it. Will be standing behind. The difference, it's just a concern. We don't want to set an obstacle in front of something that everybody can enjoy behind. That's just a question.
Yeah, that was the whole point of turning it to the south so that other people on the, at the open space can look and see the the concert. So. We can look into that with um.
Maybe the front could be a little bit lower than, I mean, not underground, I mean, but maybe so that, I don't know, that's. Uh, physically possible, you know, if it if it drains, it can drain. But maybe it would be less of a visual obstacle from the south view. That's just a concern that I can see.
When we do design, we can look at that option. We'd have to look to see what utilities and um subsurface looks like at that point, but we could. Tip it and grade down in order to bring stage and the first seats lower, so it's less of a. A wall per se behind. Right, um, that that's something, you know, we could.
Would that be still, it looks like it's a.
The actual design of that um has, the detail is not here on that yet. So when the detail comes. Uh, we will certainly bring that for the city council. The last thing we want to do is start down the path of building something that doesn't meet the council's vision. So. Um, this is, this is a preliminary design concept that we will use to start the the construction drawing phase. But before we get to actually focusing or 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 uh determining what. Each individual component is gonna look like of of hard structure, like the the restroom building or the amphitheater here. We will bring this back to the council for. For review and approval.
Yeah, but of course, the other one, uh, we're gonna talk about the flag location now or later.
We should talk about that now.
And then uh I was thinking visually, it's kind of an obstacle from the, from the drive or the, you know, the. The street, the sort of south street section, when I would like to see it more open to the flags behind.
Sorry, just to just, I just returned to say with questions really quick, we just wanted, because we said to do public comment too. So just, is this a question or did you want to do a discussion at this point? Yeah, just just keeping it to staff questions at all time.
That was my question, whether whether we're deciding where the flag, what we can.
Yeah, yes, I just wanted to keep, yeah. Vice Mayor Lewis, any questions for staff? Uh, only quick questions I had was one is, is, I know you brought up the art art, there's the three options that are various. Yes, thank you. Are all three compliant within what was passed in the specific plan for avenue? And that was established in, that's the specific, I just because it's always the question is like, why are we doing? Art deco. For the record, we've established art deco is the specific plan that was passed in the year.
Twenty seventeen.
Thank you. So we have had for eight years, this is the law of the land and we are working within the law of the land that's been established for eight years and all three of those styles. Fit within that.
Correct.
In terms of the architecture that is currently being planned on various projects. Oh, still, I I will still need to have that little cheat sheet of the three options there, because I cannot memorize them yet. Classic modern, art modern and fifties diner with the two streamlined. Do we have proposed projects or concept conceptual projects that fall under all three of those concepts?
We have, so five eighteen and creekside village are classic modern. Um. He soup, which nobody has seen publicly yet, uh in in terms of planning commissioner, city council has. Some classics, some uh and a bit of fifties diner on the bottom. Um, less so streamlined art modern that we've seen so far.
Arco Station, that's more of the uh the fifty, well.
In between classic and art, classic modern, art modern.
Yeah.
Bit harder because it's, yeah, it's a gas station, so.
And then this might be more for our consultant, but just to understand architectural design for someone who doesn't understand that. Is it that it's a linear progression between classic modern led to art modern and art modern led to fifties diner? Is it like, would you say that streamlined art modern is the midpoint that drew inspiration? Is I'm trying to find the the happy median. I'm just trying to understand that the best, like what's the most like?
Are you?
Point that you deviate from? Like I'm asking God this question right now, so I just looked at this.
Go ahead, Cara, if you have. Oh, okay. Um, I was gonna say, it's it's kind of the evolution of the style because it back in, you know, twenties to forties, it wasn't considered. It wasn't called art deco. It was um, but the style, yeah, the style of the day. And so um, classic modern was really. It, those are sort of linear, but it it progressed as culture changes, as wars happen, so. Um.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's kind of the timeline along the way.
Yeah.
It it has a timeline and then something I'll add to, I I agree with Cara, something I'll add, I think it also has. A have a cultural component. So uh when and historical component. So sometimes I've seen art deco have um influences from Egyptian discoveries. Or um different cultures like if you in Europe have their own interpretation and they're very similar. But you will have a cultural component in it or something in the history at the time that that. Building was built that influenced it, whether it was archaeological or. Uh, or other mo- modern, like Cara said, that the boat and the plane was a big thing too. So it's general, but there I. I want to say personally, as my personal opinion, I think there's also cultural component that is embedded sometimes in it.
Thank you. That's all I have.
I I the quite the the picture that you had that was from Avenue Flags.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, uh, oh, art, yeah, modern.
Where was that?
I'm not sure exactly where on Avenue, but um it was part of.
A gas station behind it?
Mm-hmm, I believe so.
Like a service station?
Yeah, I think it was part of either a a car. Um, it's car oriented business or gas station.
And what was the name of that architect or the?
This style was the streamlined art modern.
Okay, I just didn't know what to title. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Oh, gotcha. Yeah, we'll need you to fill out a slip survey. Sounds like we do have a public comment, but think, oh, yeah, you weren't here when we, yeah, sounds good. But you can do that after, you go do your public, you just fill it out before you leave.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you went home late.
Appreciate that. Hi, my name is Ed St. George. And I guess I have a question. Is there a reason that I know I'm late to the game on this? Uh, I was given the information that's happened tonight. I really appreciate that uh by council member. Is there a financial reason we have to go, I mean, quote so quickly on this? I mean, is there state funds that we're looking at? Is that why this is happening right now?
No, this is, this is happening now because this is kind of the last stage in a process that's been going on for probably five years or so.
Okay, I I would just like to suggest, only because I'm really involved on the Avenue of Flags right now. Uh, if there's a way we could pump the brakes a little on this and if. We were building some small projects on the avenue, that would be one thing. And I think those would be more influenced or not be so influential um on the avenue itself. But the fact is that these are kind of probably the three of Ullton's larger projects, but they will be the largest to the time. On the avenue. Uh, I think it may be prudent to wait until. I mean, and I would love to see the park going now. Maybe still do the ball bouts, you do your flags, get some trees in. But I I think it would be prudent to wait to kind of see the influence that these buildings are gonna have. Um, sometimes I think like when you're doing landscaping, um, and you get too many different architects or too many styles going, it just doesn't work. I think this is the last part. As I would say, for me, for pulling in tenants on my buildings there, I'd love to see a beautiful park across the street. My unselfish side says I would really like the city to kind of wait a little bit um until those buildings get in. To see how influential they are going to feel, because I don't want the park to look silly up against the buildings. Uh, and I'm not saying that it would, but I'm saying it's difficult for even in my mind, I know what those buildings gonna look like. Like in the back of my my eyelids right now, but I'm having a difficult time having that blend with that park right now. And I'm used to looking at plants. But that's all I'm saying is I I if there's a way to pump the brakes, uh, I I would suggest that. I mean, we're going forward. I I think we're we're moving pretty quickly. I mean, we're going forward. I I think we're we're moving pretty quickly on on those projects. Um I've already secured the funding for them. Uh we're moving forward at a at a pretty quick pace. Uh it's not gonna be that much longer before they're up. And they will be influential. I'm not, Peasoup is not the case. But we have the two seventeen project where we will have the diner look. Uh you know, the coffee pot project, I call it, uh and then these two larger apartment buildings. As I said, the park is only going to improve the value of my projects. Love to see it go in, but love to see it done really right. It may just not be the time right now to make those decisions.
And is your concern like the designs matching or like the ability for everyone to coexist while everyone is doing all this construction, or I just wanna understand?
Yeah, that's a great question. Um it's, what I'm more concerned about is that those are gonna be the elephants in the room. The these are big projects. These aren't small projects. They're big. And once those go up, it's it's difficult to imagine what those projects are gonna feel like. You know, sometimes something looks really great in a picture, and then all of a sudden you take it to where you're gonna put it in, and you're like, oh, wait, okay, this is gonna work. That that's my biggest concern. Um unless there was like funds that were, the city was gonna lose, I was gonna say, okay, great, I understand why. But if it means just waiting until, you know, these things are up and landscaped, now it's like, okay, maybe this amphitheater doesn't work, or maybe we should put it in a different spot, or that that that's all I'm saying right now.
Are you just concerned?
I think we also have to be mindful of a big public comment that we can't do a full Q and A situation with that. I I think I'm anticipating you're leaning.
I was gonna say.
I guess, but he's asking about timelines, and the timeline is, we could proceed with the park and not decide on the on what the building is gonna look like, or the all this that we're talking about. Is the building's design, is that not what, or or is something different?
So what we're dealing with here is is what what's presented this evening is the conceptual design. What we're asking for really, the 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 ground level improvements, the hardscape, the landscaping. The buildings are part of this, but as as Kara noted, and and I was going to to recommend to the council, it might be prudent to wait until the council decides what the use of that building is gonna be before we actually go about designing it. Um and uh we we have a number of options involved there, so if the you know, the the council wants to hold off on on that, that's fine. I don't know, um you know, it's 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 up to you whether you wanna go, I mean, the on the rest of it, the rest of it is essentially landscaping and and uh and pavement. So and um and I don't know whether Mr. St. George has an issue with the landscaping and the pavement aspect of it, or whether it's just the bit the 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 built aspect, the height, the the above ground aspect of it.
I I think, as I say, I I always like trees, especially trees, if you, they're only three or four years old, you can always move around. That's right. It hardscaping is I would, I would caution. The, the the only reason is, is I guess I don't wanna spill the beans too much on the Peasoup project. But there's some aspects of Peasoup that may be a lot more influential in what we're doing on that island um than you may think. It it's inside, what this is telling me right now is I really need to get that to council quicker or PC quicker. Or I guess I could bring it to council.
I'm just staring at you right now, pretty much tell me when we have to stop.
Fine, I did just wanna note that we do limited normally to three minutes.
It was just a question.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Here we have more.
Any other public comment?
No, sir.
Great. We'll bring it back to council for discussion.
Um I'll just disclose X Y communication with as St. George. Um I had lunch with Ed uh some time ago. Uh we talked about a wide variety of things. Um I did mention that uh we were planning on moving forward median three uh uh concept review at some point, and he asked me to let him know if and when that would be on the agenda, which I did via text today. Um that was the extended conversation. Um so my I have a couple concerns with the concept right now. Uh I've reviewed this Avenue Flags specific plan, specific to median three. I see it calls for a lot of these features, including the amphitheater, whatever else. Um and so really, my main concern at that point, at this point, is really like the amphitheater and the proposed use for that. I love what uh staff and our consultants have done. Um I just, I want it to be usable space. Uh I just am concerned that amphitheater right there um with the, I mean, just going back to the conceptual drawings, it looks like we have amphitheater, two sidewalks, and then right in front of that amphitheater is three tiered steps, and then we know we have big streets on either side of that. Um and then immediately behind it, coffee tables for sitting. And I'm just kind of wondering, like an overarching sense, like what are we doing with this area? Uh what's the planned purpose? Cause I thought like in the beginning, we were doing uh the parking lot thing, and we're gonna have maybe space so people could park, and we got farmer's market. I know the idea of food trucks coming is great, but um food trucks, you know, that is gonna happen, it's gonna bring its own concern for restaurants and everything else there, so it's just pulling back to a thirty thousand bit view, which might be inappropriate at this point, but this is kind of my thought process. I I just have concerns with the overall use of the space. Um but if we're, you know, in terms of conceptual style, I like the uh like Art Deco with the diners, the fifty. All that. That's that's it.
Consumer incentives? Okay, Vice Mayor Lewis.
I think that I have a really hard time already with our Art Deco style. Not that you guys haven't made it lovely and beautiful and all the things. But I think that if we're gonna do it, I really am OCD about things matching. And I don't like the whole blendy blend, like this is eighty, this is diner, like I don't I want it to be kind of uniform, so I think that seeing the things that go in, what they look like and how they, you know, how they function on on the whole avenue is gonna be more important than I had considered previously. But I really want it to match, and I do, I do also have thoughts about like what will the amphitheater look like in between two big huge buildings, like like we're looking at it kind of in a silo, so I think maybe it might be prudent to wait, and I don't know if we can move forward with drawings or if that's a waste of money. You know, like, I'm not entirely certain how to not stall your process, but also not waste money, because I think it's very important that it matches and that the the use for the space also matches.
Okay, well, from what from what I'm hearing from council and from the public comment was that the concern um is has to do with buildings, the style of the buildings, and uh potentially the the style and appearance of the hardscaping. So we can, I mean, it is possible to move forward with drawings for things like the grading, or things like the landscaping, and hold off on selection of hardscape uh materials. Even in in hardscape is one of those things you can make last minute deviations to it uh uh as as you're approaching construction time, uh and then the buildings. Um i- at least to get this rolling so that we have an idea. Um if we are searching for, and we are searching for grant funding to help with this, the further along we are with planning, the more and design, the more likely we are to come up with grant funding for that. So I don't, I don't want to, I don't wanna um tell the council, it's it's preferable to move one way or the other. Um but at the same time, I I I'd hate to see this stall right here and start from scratch two, three years from now. If there are things that everyone is comfortable moving forward with now that a- a- and and we allow some space to to hold off on the things you may not be comfortable with until later. Um you know, and I think any step forward at this point is beneficial, but I agree, I don't wanna I don't wanna be in a position where we're putting something forward, then we're gonna completely come in and and throw throw the plans out the window and start from scratch two, three years from now. If if, you know, we're gonna do that, then we should just hold off.
So um we've uh we've already decided on the amphitheater. It sounds like Hudson didn't like the amphitheater idea. But the uh, it's something that we've already discussed and made decisions on. But the uh, and as far as the elevations on each side of that, that that's gonna be up on the north end, and it's and it's not gonna be between the big buildings. It's it's gonna be uh I mean, the 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 how the properties beside it are gonna be tall. The tall part is gonna be down at the lower part, just see the the other two hotels are are low profile. And then the big ones are gonna be down here by Second Street. So uh as far as corridor looking at top, I don't think, I don't see that. Uh I see your concern, and it would, it could be, but the the whole, the big part is gonna be down at the bottom here. And then, and I would, I would like, if we're gonna make a decision between the three designs, it would be better to to match, and that's your concern as well. And once we see what's going in, the thing, what's going in has been decided, but it's gonna be something we can visually see, and we could all feel better about, and uh so that's what I'd like to get, if if it's the option to get moving with the whatever has to do, and at the end we can put the gingerbread where we want it. You know, it's gonna make it, we'll change, we'll match. You know, we'll decide then whether we're, you know, we're not gonna put the the, you know, the the glass squares there or whatever we decide.
You're talking about the rooms, the houses.
Yeah, that's I think, I think that the decision, like, I think what the question was, we wanna decide on the the uh the scope of that building, and that doesn't have to be decided in the beginning. At the end, if it changes, it doesn't match. You know, then we can do that then, we could kind of save that for as a phase three section of it.
And then there is some benefit to to seeing the buildings start to go up before you decide on on architectural style or um size of those buildings, because massing becomes very important when you're looking at at whether something is is architecturally compatible in an area. You don't want a a building to be really low rise and dwarfed by the building behind it. You want something that's reasonably proportional. Uh even even if they're not, you know, you could be dealing with a one-story building versus a four-story building, you you can still have some architectural proportionality there that you wouldn't have. Uh you may not have with another style, so I I I see the value in in holding off um from from the building perspective, particularly since we still don't know what what the building would be used for, so.
Then we can proceed with to go forward tonight with the uh the infrastructure part, if we like the bulbs out, the bulb outs, or whether we want the flags behind or forward, and uh and then the building will be a future decision.
We can look at the design elements of the building and the and the um amphitheater, uh the design elements of the hardscape. Um and e- even, you know, even scale of some of the uh, I don't wanna call them the furniture, but shade structures and that sort of thing. As as we approach um actual construction time, and um we'd have the benefit of buildings at the very least under construction by then, and we'd have an idea what's kind of scale we'd be looking at.
Yeah.
Because we have the plans, but we we all know things often when they get built don't look like what you think they're gonna look like when they're when they're on paper.
Are we, so just to confirm, we are required to put in a, by by specific time, the amphitheater has to go in?
Well, it is a design element of the specific plan. I don't know that it's ab- it's an absolute requirement um.
I think, you know, it was something that the council had, you know, voted on at the time, but I think they were sort of design option. It didn't necessarily mean that you have to put an amphitheater. It was just, hey, we anticipate the like, you know, this is what we want as a council at the time in terms of programming for this median, uh but that's all, that portion of it, I believe, is flex flexible.
I think the city council, and I I wasn't there at the time, but my understanding is the city council was looking at this median as being a a central gathering space for the public in within the community, a a place where the community could come together outdoors, that would would are calling now a third space, kind of a a situation where everyone would just come. And so an amphitheater really um is one of those things that you can put to all sorts of uses, whether it be a band performance or a theatrical performance or an art display or uh you know.
Originally, it was facing another direction.
Right.
So we decided to make it south, so you have more.
No, we were there for that.
Yeah, yeah. So I think I think there's some, there's some flexibility there wherever the council wants to go, but it was put forward as as one of those features that that um uh would encourage that kind of community gathering.
Well, so, I'm sorry, I don't want to.
Not good.
Well, it does get back to my question from a fifty thousand foot view, like what are we really doing with this space, right? I mean, it's not that wide of a space. Do we anticipate having bands there? Do we anticipate having theater productions there? I mean, it's also gonna be flanked by two sidewalks with this con- concept. So I'm just, I'm just worried, like, I don't wanna create something that's not gonna be utilized, right?
I I I think it's, I think it's wider than you think. Um uh I don't know, Kara or Yolanda, do you have a width on the uh?
Seventy-five, seventy, yeah.
I think it's seventy-five feet.
That's the median width. And those are twelve-foot sidewalks on either side?
Uh ten.
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 Fifty-five.
So fifty, fifty feet, yeah, that's that's a.
Yeah, that's about it. I think it's a little larger, but I think that's about it, you know.
Okay.
Seventy to eight.
I think things like the winter stuff that we do, like with all the vendors, the the food trucks and all that, like I think it would make it a more walkable space to do those things that we currently do there right now.
Winter pest.
Yeah, that's the word.
The one we do in the park, where we line up the vendors on either side. Well, not necessarily, but something like that, that would be, this this kind of space would be conducive to.
I'm I'm sure where is in there, man, sorry.
Uh I'll just get through my stuff really quick. So my concern is, I do have the the first thing that comes to me is, we have, I don't know how many decades we've talked about the Avenue of Flags, and so I want to be five decades, five decades, back when Art Deco was just current day architecture. So um what I'm concerned with is, I agree with the sensibility of pausing, but I am concerned about if the city pauses, the chilling effect that can have on architecture and construction on the avenue. I I don't want to contribute to that, and I understand with Mr. St. George's comments and things, I wanna be thoughtful that we've got, but when the city says, I'm not sure what we wanna do yet, I don't know what, how the impacts further private investment of construction with it. So I do think that we have an obligation, even if it's incremental, to move in some forward fashion, even if it's just by gesture or by virtue of like trying to keep things moving. But if we stall completely, I do think that that can contribute to the narrative of like, the avenue is just never gonna happen. And so I I just I don't know how to hold those two things. I also struggle of like I get the matching, but just by the nature of what we've discussed of the projects coming on, there isn't already going to be a match, and you have to have some fluidity. And also remember that half the buildings on the avenue won't even be Art Deco in style, like we are gonna have agrarian? I don't, insert words that are other architectural styles. So when we're worried about the matching, we have an obligation to acknowledge that not everything's Art Deco, nor will it be Art Deco for who knows how long to be consistent. So I don't know how to marry all those further issues. So I think we could be thoughtful with a sensible pause that we have the discussion of of like, what can we set that up? Maybe it's the bulb outs, maybe it's the flags, maybe it's that stage. And leave the fun part, the architectural design part of it for a future discussion. But I also think then that we have this obligation of what is that? How long are we willing to pause before we may be contributing to the impact of the avenue revitalization?
Yeah, I mean, that is also a concern because like those two properties that Mr. St. George, I believe now owns and controls, I believe they're supposed to develop last June or or break ground whenever that was.
Well.
At least that's what I was told.
The under the, under the original entitlements, the entitlements have been modified since then, so they're they're moving forward um uh under new entitlements right now. But I I I think there is a way to accomplish what the council's looking for. And I think it it goes along with moving forward on what we know everyone wants. Um the landscaping, the bulb outs, the location of the flags, the the specific design elements, again, the pavers um can wait. Uh we can, we can pick those at the last minute before we let contracts out or bids out on the project. Obviously, the buildings need to come a little sooner than that, but I think we have time. And um I think that um uh you know, as as Mr. St. George said, he's, he may wanna bring his project forward a little quicker, so we all have an idea as to what that's gonna, what's gonna, that's gonna. You know, as, as Mr. St. George said, he's, he, he may want to bring his project forward a little quicker, so we all have an idea as to what that's gonna, what's gonna, that's gonna look like. And how it might fit in with this centerpiece of the, of the Avenue of Flags. So I think. We can work, continue forward so that, that we don't lose momentum here, while at the same time pausing. Relevant aspects of that, so that we can cooperate with an active developer.
I think it's perfect's the enemy of good, but also buy cheap, buy twice situation where I would hate to. I don't want to oversimplify this, so it's not a statement, but I don't want to do it just for like waiting for perfection before we're able to do anything. Because I think we, as a city, need to put some of our skin in the game on that too. And so however we can complement that with. Public investment with private sector coordination, I think is really where we have to be. But I think we need to. Keep our foot on the pedal to some degree to ensure we're driving this. And I think all four of us are committed to, the avenue has to be developed. And we have to keep pushing that forward structure going, because we want to see tenants on there. We want to see businesses on there. And we just can't have the narrative be that council's not even willing to commit to. Investing into it. So as long as we are proactive in that and how we're marketing this. I guess that's the best.
Uh, question. About the design. The pavers. We, it was, as you said, the match, the, the, the parking lot, but we don't have to do those big tanks and run off things like. Other buildings do it. I mean, like. I know that, that we had to put in any water retention area and all that. Is that gonna be part of this?
We'll still need to do something. We haven't even. Began to look at what that would. Be like for this particular project. But every development, just like a private development would, stays. Has to look at that as well.
The, the design on this has, has minimized the need for that to some degree. With the inclusion of permeable pavement and a lot of landscaping and the use of bio swale running down. I think it's the south side, or no, the east side, rather. But there will still be a degree of impermeability to it that will require the retention of some water on site.
All right, thank you. Can I, can I follow up with a question on that too? So on that, and this is. Casa Muri Sanchez's question earlier. So is that amphitheater, is that gonna be like a big wall from the other side of it, or is that gonna be? Like level the ground for grading?
We, we, we don't have a firm design on that yet. This is just very conceptual at this point. There's no grading, so we just really don't know where the contours are gonna lie yet.
All right.
But we will bring that back before any decisions remain.
Could you go to the slide where you were asking us what you want, when you wanted us to do something so we could see?
The very last slide.
Yeah, so. Us following along with what the narrative seems to be, it sounds like. We're open to the discussion of at least deciding plaza flag placement and bulb outs. To the degree that that's the commitment we're willing to make of items one and two, and we are. Taking, taking a mindful pause on our, our deco architectural style to give some space for further. Infill and kind of see where the plans go. And if there's happens to be people listening out there about submitting plans, feel free to do so in a timely manner, so we can help guide that conversation. But is that what we're kind of feeling comfortable with at this point?
Yeah.
Flags and.
Something breaks in the amphitheater too, but that's me.
Well, that sounds like that's. We, we're just, we're just flags and bulb outs. No, no.
Landscaping and it, the, the amphitheater, the two buildings, that all has to do with, with architectural design. The hardscape, there's, there's architectural design involved with that. So that will be something that will, will. Will, will pause a bit on.
I don't think I've ever said the word bulb outs so many times in one meeting. So at this point, after a good hour and a half discussion. We can discuss, we can say plaza flags. Do we want it in front or behind?
I'd like to follow what the planning department suggested.
The planning commission wanted to see them behind a mere median four.
Everyone good. Great. And bulb outs, are we filling the bulb outs?
Yep.
And for those keeping track at home on your bingo card, I'll say bulb out one more time, just so we can hit that. Good on bulb outs.
Yeah.
Bulb outs?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we have direction on flags and bulb outs, and we will bring it back later for our deco architectural style. I do want to thank all of the staff time that has gone into this to then possibly. Have you hear us say, maybe we don't want to do any of this. So I just want to thank you, because that's a lot of effort that's gone into it. And it sounds like they tried to thread the needle through a lot of different opinions to make this happen. So.
Beautiful.
Yes.
And, and you'll want to expect a call from us discussing your future work.
Thank you.
But yes, thank you for all the time you put into this presentation. I know it's a lot of effort to try and get us to all agree on something.
Well, thank you for the thoughtful discussion. Yeah. Thank you. It was my pleasure.
Was that a motion?
Do we need a motion? Okay. We're getting through there. So now we're moving on to the city manager's report. Thank goodness.
Well, I've had a twelve minute city rant. Just a couple of items. One of which we've covered already. I was going to announce that next month's deep dive topic was going to be our visitors bureau. Contract and an update from the visitors bureau. We will at council's direction move that to March, and instead next month we will, oh, no, sorry, I'm a month behind myself here. And, and next month we will have something completely different.
What am I doing next month? Circulation.
Yeah, circulation.
Speedboat.
Traffic calming improvements, yes. Okay. And then secondly, just on that whole visitors bureau. Vane, I'd like to just make one quick pitch for the. Uh, Buellton Wine and Chili Festival, which will be coming up March sixteenth, that is a Sunday. At Flying Flags Resort. And so tickets are available at, I think it's. Uh, Buellton Wine and Chili Fest dot com or, or our visitors bureau website. So. Right. With that, I'll conclude my report.
Anything from our city attorney?
And no, not tonight. Thank you.
Thanks for keeping us in line. Yeah. That was a good lean and leash. I loved it. Well, with that, then we will go ahead and close the meeting and move into, or we close the open session, move into closed session at this time at. Eight something, eight, eight twenty. Thank you.